Good evening, welcome to the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission. It's May 6, 2009. We'll call the meeting to the order. We do have a quorum. The next item is the approval of the minutes of April 1, 2009, regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections from Planning Commission? Staff, do you have anything to add to that?
Not me, sir.
All right, thank you.
If not, last chairman, I would move for adoption of the minutes as submitted.
Have a motion.
Say.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item is old business. Zoning request for a PRD amendment, approximately 4.95 acres, zone PRD along, located along River Bend Drive, Landmark Homes Developer. Ms. Ely, is that yours tonight? Oh, Ms. Adelot?
Yes, sir. During the, I guess a month ago during our first meeting in April, we had a public hearing on this matter to consider amendment to the River Bend Townhomes PRD. The request was to allow for a reduction in the square footage for, I think it would be seven of the townhome units, and to allow for a number of them to become one-story instead of two-story buildings, as was included in the original application. The Planning Commission, after the public hearing, deferred action to allow the applicant to get some full-sized exhibits and to work on some loose ends that were discussed and brought up during the public hearing and immediately prior to it. Since that time, we've had another neighborhood meeting. We've had the full-size exhibits. In fact, here they are on the board. I think this is one of them. There's about three exhibits that we have. But those were to help to answer the questions about what the building would look like. Also, there was a site plan done that addressed some of the issues about drainage. In fact, drainage has been something that has been a concern to a lot of people during this application. It's been a recurring issue. Today was a particularly good day to be reviewing it. We had our engineering department out looking and taking photographs. We had the applicant and his engineer looking at it as well. Mr. Wisnewski has put together a little bit of a PowerPoint to sort of summarize the commitments he's willing to make and where he's at. And if you're willing to take a moment to let him show you, he'd like to show them to you. Back to the drainage. I think the long and the short is, it looks like the drainage can be dealt with. They have prepared a drainage plan that would involve some additional grading. It's an area that I would say is sensitive to how it's done. If it's done well, it will work pretty good. If it's done poorly, it could become a little bit more of a problem. It's something that our staff is going to have to monitor during construction. One of the things our environmental engineer, Mr. Huddleston, that'd be Sam Huddleston, did was, he looked at it and he advised me that, it's his belief that before any additional permits are built, are issued, it'd be a good idea to see the drainage swells that are shown on the revised grading plan that has been submitted to us, to see those constructed, installed, and become functional. That way, we can go ahead and get the relief that needs to be done. And I don't think that the applicant has any problems with that. I think he can do that just before he gets his building permits. I think he has a very good handle now on what needs to be done. And then, as additional permits are pulled, we could monitor the success of those efforts to grade. I think that Mr. Wisnewski's program will help answer some of your questions, and he has on the PowerPoint that he'd like to show you.
All right. Thank you, Joseph. Chairman Young, members of Planning Commission, thanks for letting me speak here before you. This is the front entry of River Bend Park. At our last meeting, there were a couple points that came up that we wanted to review with the homeowners and also prepare for you for this meeting. The items are obliterated, as you see. The one thing was to reduce the number of one-story units from, or two-seven from eleven. Originally, and I'll show you on the forward slide, that we had actually 11 units in three buildings that were originally going to be one-story. In order to condense them and save the 30-foot width on the buildings, we've decided to go with just the end units and also the three in the middle, and I'll show those in just a sec. The second one was to supply scaled and colored renderings, as you have before you. Those are scaled and colored, and you'll see on the PowerPoint, I've got a full-size. We've also have a comparison of the two new proposed buildings, also in comparison with the existing building as it's built. The third point was to conduct another neighborhood meeting, which we did approximately two weeks ago on Monday. Some of the issues that came up were regarding the drainage that we've taken a look at with our engineer from SEC, Mike Hughes. And we also presented those to Mr. Adelot, showed him that the drainage that is in place is working, but it does need to be tweaked, and we can do a little better job to reduce the ponding, which we'll show you the revised drainage plan in a sec. And the last was an item that came up at the neighborhood meeting, in order to remove the landscape berms behind the Gorsett-Thomas property and replace it with an eight-foot tall fence to match the other fences. This will also help to provide better drainage off of that property and into the swales. The plan that's before you, Chairman Young, is it okay if I use the pointer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we're looking up on this plan here, the only units that would be allowed to be the one-story would be in these buildings right here. The units that would actually be a one-story would be on this end right here, Unit 6, then Unit 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 16 here. The renderings before you would be the building number 11, 12, or 10, 11, and 12, which would all be a single-story unit, three in the building. They will be built with bonus rooms above, so the approximate square footage will be 2,400-plus square feet. This next rendering shows the buildings 6 through 9, and also 13 through 16, showing two two-story units in the middle of the building and the single stories on each end. The one request that came from one of the owners at River Bend Park, Mr. Bill Huddleston, was that if this were building 6 through 9, this building here would be number 6. Next to that is Mr. Huddleston's place. He requested that these single stories, this one, as you can see, is a front entry. This one here is a side entry. He requested, because the positioning of the buildings that are actually angled into the property, that this building number 6 only be a front entry in order to allow them some privacy. We don't see that being a problem. That's why we have it proposed. Here's the existing building that's built. This is our model, Lot Number 4. This is Mr. Huddleston's unit. And we put a little comparison together to show you that we're staying with existing exteriors, which will match in the stone, the brick, the hardy plank, the architectural garage doors. The outside façades will be exactly the same. This revised grading plan is showing two things. The yellow outlined area right here is showing the back of Mr. Gorsett's property, which is this property right here. Mr. Gorsett now has a six-foot fence that is right on the ground, and it is damming up some of the water. In addition to that, we built, as per the original request of Mr. Gorsett, three, that's actually four, landscape berms right along this area. The berms are actually hampering the water movement slightly, because there's breaks in the berms. They've got to go to the berm and then walk this, or flow themselves around into these areas here. By removing the berms and erecting an eight-foot-tall fence to match the other fences we built and leaving it approximately three to four inches off the ground, will help his drainage, and it'll feed the water sheet spill it into this area and then drain it into these areas between the buildings and on around as per the new drainage plan. If there's any questions, I'd like to answer them for you.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We may want to ask another question.
Certainly.
I may call you back up if needed.
Mr. Young and members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to also point out, and I looked at my materials, and I didn't recognize, and it may be an omission on my part in terms of materials, but I think in our previous meeting, where we studied this during our daytime meeting, there was a point-by-point response to some of the issues that had been brought up, including some that Mr. Wisnewski mentioned involved Mr. Huddleston, that he would go ahead and set up an advisory owners' association so they can help with that. Issues dealing with the closing a portion of it to construction traffic, issues about paving the streets, so it doesn't sit out there unpaved, the final topping. I would like to, you know, reference that in your thoughts. Those commitments are still part of his application and part of what he's committed to do.
And the reason they're not mentioned is because everybody was agreeing on that.
That's right. That's right. And also, just as a point of clarification, we have no public hearing advertised on this issue tonight. You are simply called upon to discuss it, ask questions, and if you are ready to move it on to the City Council with a recommendation.
Those questions and responses are in here.
Okay, they are, okay.
Yes, sir.
I was looking for them and wasn't seeing them, so I wanted to just make that clear.
The thing that we look at most in any development is drainage and runoff. Does the city feel confident that this drainage problem or drainage tweaking will improve the site?
Yes, I am. Actually, I sat down, actually, I was most insistent with the applicant and his engineer that they get out there today during the rain event, which is a very good time since it's been several days of heavy rain and the waters begin to pool, and while it was raining, be able to see the way the system worked. I felt that Mr. Mike Hughes with SEC, Site Engineering Consultants, who is the engineer of the project, had a very good handle on the existing situation and on how to improve it for the future. Also, Mr. Wisnewski accompanied him. They were looking both across the fence and into the neighbors' backyards to see what the situation was. We sat down this afternoon and discussed it, and then I discussed it separately with Mr. Sam Huddleston with my staff, and had the same basic conclusions. It's going to require careful grading, but if they implement the plan, it appears that it will resolve the, most of the drainage issues. Some of the drainage situations, particularly the Nichols property, it doesn't look like they can solve that to maybe the degree that Mr. Nichols would like. But it doesn't look like Mr. Nichols getting water into his house or anything like that. And some of that may have been a condition that was waiting to be manifested by any type of development on this property. It wasn't, it wasn't a function of poor grading by this development as much as it was any development on this property probably caused it to be manifested. A situation that may just reside with the way the land lays, it's very flat right back there. Mr. Sam Huddleston is here. He can certainly answer your questions or address any additional concerns about drainage or insights that he may have.
Joseph, is the new stormwater plan or the wavefront plan, is it necessitated or are there changes that Mr. Wisnewski is making, or is it just a?
It's just not working out like it, as well as we thought it would initially.
Actually, it's not necessitated by the changes. What it is, it's, that area is very flat, and it looks like that with the grading for the pads, there's maybe a little bit of casual work that may not have been to the degree of accuracy it needed to be. By going ahead and looking at the, it's really sort of a, it's an opportunity to take stock in the situation is really what it is. I think that the situation will improve when the structures are built and the yards are stabilized, but it's a good time to take stock in the situation. If you notice, the site has several pads that have been filled. Some of that is just not completed, and because of that, the drainage system may operate a little bit more sluggish than it should. Also, we've looked at the possibility of cutting some curb openings in the front extruded curb. That will reduce the elevations by about six inches, which in this situation will help a whole lot. Also, something else that will certainly be beneficial will be the opportunity to take the roof drains and put them into the side ditches, which right now, whatever falls on those lots probably just kind of pools. But with the roof drains, to be able to send it into a system that will get it off the property. Also, I think the fences, while well-intentioned and a good idea, they were placed so close to the ground that even with a little bit of what, I guess, Mr. Huddleston, Mr. Sam Huddleston referred to as handwork and yard raking when they were filling those berms, may have inadvertently caused the ground elevation to get a little bit higher around that fence. The fence was put right on the ground, but what it's having a tendency to do is trap water, because water doesn't go under that fence very well. So, and it's obvious, especially when you, when you go out and look and see some places where they've tried to make some openings underneath the fence for water to get under, and that's what the water is actually doing. So, removing Mr. Gorsett's fence and raising it and rebuilding it is going to help that situation for him quite a bit.
Any other questions or comments? What be the wishes of the commission?
Well, I want to thank Mr. Wisnewski for all the hard work he's done. I think this product looks very nice, and I thank you for working with all the neighbors and the co-owners in his development. Said I'd move approval subject to all staff comments.
And the materials contained in your agenda?
And the materials attached.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a zoning request for approximately 19.0 acres along Old Fort Parkway, Highway 96, to be rezoned from CL and RS15 to PCD, 1.5 acres, and from RS15 to R12 and CFs, CF to RPD, 17.51 acres. Autumn Woods Place General Partnership Applicent. Ms. Ely.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Young and Planning Commission members. You have before you a request to rezone property located along the south side of Old Fort Parkway, west of St. Andrews Drive. This property is currently 19.01 acres and consists of five parcels total. The five parcels, the request to rezone this property is basically a two-part request. The first is to rezone 1.5 acres located along the northern side, along Old Fort Parkway, from its current CL, local commercial district, and RS15 zone to PCD, planned commercial district. The applicant has committed for this parcel to meet the gateway design overlay district development standards and review process when the site is ready to develop. However, at this time, the applicant is unsure of what will go on this site. The second part of the request is to rezone the remaining 16.45, the remaining 17.51 acres to PRD, which is planned residential district. This will allow 288 multifamily residential apartment complexes. And if you will turn your attention to the map before you, the area shaded blue is the area that's requesting to be rezoned PCD, and the area that's shaded orange is the area that's requesting to be zoned PRD. The surrounding zoning to the, to the west is zoned RS15, but it's location of the Town and Country Apartment Complex. To the east, there are three separate apartment complexes, and there's also the Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation offices located directly to the property on the east. To the south are also are some more multifamily residential apartment complexes. Mr. Adelot has some additional comments that he'd like to make regarding this rezoning request, after which the Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing. We've advertised that in the paper. And afterwards, feel free to make a recommendation to staff, to forward to City Council. If you have any questions, either before or after the public hearing, Mr. Adelot and I will be able to answer those, but before you conduct a public hearing, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Adelot.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Members of the Planning Commission, the situation that I want to discuss real briefly is the situation involves the right-of-way that's located between the Town and Country Apartments in this lot. And once again, I want to point out to you on this map right here. In, today I received a call from Ms. Connie Hill. She's here, she's going to probably speak when the public hearing opens. She also sent you a letter, sent to me a letter, which I forwarded to you so that you can see it. But her concern revolves around the access to the back of her property, how it may be impacted by the design of those apartments. As we've discussed, the right-of-way has been a little bit confusing, a little bit unusual, and it's a situation that appears to be resolved in terms of ownership, at least to a degree of them owning it, but there may still be rights attached to it that Ms. Hill would like to exercise. So, that is a little bit unclear, and before you take final action, I'd like to have a clarification on it. Tonight, I'd like to go ahead and have the public hearing. We may gain some insights that may help to resolve this, or may be additional assignments for me to track down before you make a recommendation. But I would like to tell you that I did meet with Mr. Bill Huddleston, who's the engineer on this, and it looks like even if, it looks like the plan might be able to be altered to allow that access. Additionally, there may be some questions about sewer access that I have not yet heard back from the Water and Sewer Department, so that's a second issue that I think we may need to track down before we make a recommendation. So, those are my two issues, unless you have questions. Go ahead and have the public hearing. I may have some additional comments after.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. If you're not familiar with our public hearings, we'll open the public hearing and ask anyone to come forward and speak for or against this request. We'll ask you to identify yourself, speak directly to the Planning Commission, and we will try to answer all your questions at the end of the public hearing. So, with that, we'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wants to speak on this,
Kevin Gunther with Design Resource, and I am here representing the developer. We did want to briefly summarize our efforts in the project to date. We believe that, you know, we've worked very hard at creating the egress points, high quality of architecture, high level of amenities. The project has over 50% open space. With all that being said, we hope that the use is seen as very compatible with the surrounding and is well-designed site. We realize that the issue of the egress point on the 50-foot parcel to adjoining land is something that may require further review, and we are willing to do that and make sure that any excess that is entitled, we can work into the process. So, I did want to make mention, if we, if we need to pause and take a look at that, we are certainly happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak on this matter? If I was an auctioneer, I wouldn't be doing real well. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, Mr. Gilli?
Mr. Adelot, it sounds like you're looking for a deferral on this tonight. Would that be your explanation?
Yes, I'm going to ask that you defer action, because with that situation, and I did discuss that with the applicant before the meeting, that I wanted to get that resolved before I put you in a position of having to make a recommendation. And also, Ms. Hill, I locked eyes with her and said, here's your chance to speak, and she declined to speak. But her letter speaks for itself. She's, and it will be part of our file.
Without a move for a deferral, then?
Second motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is deferred. The next item is an annexation request for approximately 4.29 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, Park Trust Development applicant.
Good evening again. Thank you, Chairman Young and Planning Commission members. You have before you a request from Park Trust Development to annex four separate parcels located on the north side of Franklin Road or Highway 96, and along the west side of Veterans Parkway, which was formerly known as Beasley Road. In the study area, there is one vacant parcel and three parcels that each have a single-family house on them, which are currently have residents in it. The property to the southeast is the future location of the Family Worship Center, which we have seen an annexation request for, and that's where the property is contiguous with city limits. The property, all four properties are within Murfreesboro's urban growth boundary. The study area, as you may remember, also includes 250 feet of right-of-way along Highway 96 and 337 feet of right-of-way along Veterans Boulevard. This right-of-way is contiguous with the study area. The city will be able to provide services to the study area upon annexation becoming effective. I did want to point out that the sewer currently is along Creek to the east, and it is the staff's expectation that the developer will extend that sewer service. Now, the plans from Water Sewer show it along the south side of Franklin Road to serve the subject area. CUD will be the water sewer, water provider for the area. I've included a plan of services in your, in your packages. We should hold a public hearing to consider the plan of services and the annexation of these four parcels. If you have any questions regarding the matter, staff's available. There's also a representative of the applicant, Mr. Parks, is here this evening. If you have any questions from him, otherwise, we should conduct a public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Young, members of the planning, I want to point a clarification on the sewer. The sewer, if the developer chooses to move forward before other development, intervening development takes place, he may have that opportunity to build the sewer. However, it may be the city's policy, according to our policies, if other property owners develop first, they may be able to extend it themselves. So, what we would like to say is that sewer service would be subject to our ordinary policies for sewer extensions through the normal development process.
We'll open the public hearing and ask that anyone speak for or against this matter. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Terry Taylor. I reside at the rental property at 4411 Veterans Parkway. I have a picture. May I put it up? I stand in opposition to this tonight for two reasons. The first, which is probably obvious, I enjoy living in the house. It's, as rental houses go, it's one of the nicer, affordable homes, and I would love to live there for another year. The backyard is just magnificent. It's over an acre large. The second reason is the more important one, and if I, if I may quote Dr. Seuss, "I am the Lorax and I speak for the trees. I speak for the trees for they have no tongues." About three weeks ago, Murfreesboro experienced the worst tornadoes in its history, and along with 70-plus houses that were destroyed were hundreds and hundreds of trees. On the property where I live, I share it with two magnificent tulip poplar, old-growth tulip poplar trees, one of which I have the picture of, and there are three of these. Two are on my property, and one is on the adjacent property. And there are many reasons why these trees should be spared, and not really spared even, but pampered, because, you know, when I go down the greenway and Because, you know, when I go down the greenway and I see all those trees that were leveled that were once there, and you can drive across town and see all these trees that we've lost. And the loss of those trees was involuntary, and it's very tragic. And it will be equally tragic if we decide to cut down these trees. So I would consider, I would like for you to consider changing this. You know, these are the state trees of Tennessee. They are the tallest eastern hardwood. The one that I have the picture of, the circumference is about 17 and 1/2 feet around, which, if you calculate, would put it about almost six feet across. This is a big tree. I was not able to calculate the height because of the shadow is just so large, it was not able to do. They grow to more than 165 feet, and they're hardly found west of the Mississippi River. So we're talking not your average tree. These are state champions, and they should be saved. And it might be that someone says, well, I'm going to put in a MAPCO, but I promise I'm going to save the trees. Well, a colleague of mine, whose husband is a contractor, had this similar situation a few years ago in Davinson County. And they brought in an expert, and they calculated the root system. And they decided, okay, we need this much space to enable this tree to live, and we'll save the root system. And they built their building, and they left sufficient space for the tree, and the tree died anyway. So it would be a really tragic thing for these trees to go down. And I think it would be irresponsible for us to do, cut them or in some way let them die. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Anyone at all? We'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed you, sir. We'll open the public hearing again and continue on.
David Bullard, 4603 Veterans Parkway. I'm for the project. I think it would, I think it would sort of clean up the end of the street a little bit. There's a couple houses with not much yard since the road come through, but don't quite look, you know, it looks like something happened there. So I think putting in some businesses would actually clean it up and make it look more presentable. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be real cautious this time. Anyone else like to speak? I think I'm good. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, I have a question. The Veterans Parkway from 840 to Franklin Road is now open. Is that correct?
It's five lanes all the way.
And it dead-ends at the Franklin Road and medical, I mean, Veterans Parkway will extend on down Moreland Lane and hook up further on down and come all the way out to 231?
Yes, sir.
And this is really the first leg of the, major leg of the completed part from 840 to the Franklin Road?
Right. This part was built, the city, the county, and the state working together on this part.
How long has this been on the design plans?
The Veterans Parkway came, I think, in 1997 with a major thoroughfare plan.
So 12 years already?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's first leg, Mr. Adelot, between 840 and 96. How long is that? How much distance?
Oh, it's about 10 miles. But now, let's be careful. It's really not our first leg. The first part that got opened up, all the way with, of course, that was, it was a two-lane road before then. But it's five lanes. We've already got a portion that the city built south of Highway 99 over to Kimbrough Road. And it's already open, and it's built to five lanes. But we've got all the other sections under design right now, and some of them are prepared to go to bid. Hopefully, we'll be seeing them bid later on this summer. So we've got a lot underway with Veterans Parkway. It's a lot of inertia on that project, and a lot of commitment on the part of the City Council to see it constructed on through.
And when it's all said and done, we'll be able to get off at 24 and go all the way to 840 and able to touch Murphysboro, is that correct?
Well, it goes through Murphysboro, different places already. We've already annexed the both sides of it. And I think of all that area as Murphysboro, even though the parts that's not in the city. But yes, sir, we'll be able to go on a five-lane road from basically the Edelman Road interchange over to, actually, it'd be a three-lane over to 231. But then you jog up to Barfield Road, and from Barfield Road, it'd be five lanes all the way to 840. And portions of that are already built to five lanes. For instance, the portion of Barfield Crescent Road in front of the Barfield Elementary School, that's already built to five lanes. The portion I mentioned earlier, and then this portion from 96 to 840.
Any other comments? I would just ask the developer to take a serious look at seeing if any of these three trees could possibly be saved in the long-term development of this property. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions or comments, I would move for approval.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. The next item is a zoning request for approximately 2.92 acres located along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road to be zoned PCD simultaneously with annexation, Park Trust Development applicant.
Thank you again, Chairman Young and the Planning Commission members. You have before you a companion zoning change request that coincides with the property we just saw an annexation request for. It consists of four parcels, and those parcels are located on the northwestern corner of Highway 96 and Veterans Parkway. They do have three single-family houses on them and one vacant lot. To the southeast is, the property is zoned RS-15, which is single-family residential district. And the Family Worship Center either has received or is going to apply for a special-use permit to erect a church on the corner of Moreland and 96. The applicant has requested that you consider zoning this property PCD, Planned Commercial District, simultaneous with its annexation. Property is currently zoned RS-15 for residential purposes under the Rutherford County zoning. The request by the applicant to zone the property PCD comes because he has a desire to market and finance the property at a commercial rate. As you will notice, the property is at a major intersection of a newly constructed street and one that's about to be constructed. And it has, the potential there is for commercial development. Now, to give the Planning Commission a little bit more comfort, the applicant has voluntarily decided to make the property go through the Gateway Design Overlay Review Process and meet those standards, because he is currently unsure as what will go at the site. If you look in the book that's been given to you, there are just some ideas of what the applicant thinks might go there, either a convenience market or a retail strip center. But he did want you to know that he did want to go through development review and process of the GDO. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider zoning this property PCD, Planned Commercial District, simultaneous with its annexation. Mr. Parks is here this evening, if you have any questions about the zoning. As you are well aware, the PCD zoning, or zoning in general, gives a property a right or entitlement to develop a certain way. So the applicant is requesting that they have an entitlement to develop commercially at some time in the future. If you have any questions, either before or after the public hearing, staff's available, as well as Mr. Parks.
Question, Ms. Ely. The zoning that he's requesting is more stringent than a straight commercial highway?
That's absolutely correct. As a planned development, we typically see a very certain development, what's going to go there. Because the applicant is uncertain of what they want to do, he's aware that maybe in the future, if he wants to change the plan any at all, that he'd have to come back before this three-to-four-month process, before the Planning Commission and City Council to make any changes to the plan as it's proposed. But the planned development zone category is much more stringent than the CH or CL or CF or any of our other commercial zones.
Questions? Please, John.
What happens to the other, in the annexation request, we had 4.29 acres, and this is 2.9?
The annexation request is four, a little over four, because it includes the right-of-way of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road. This zoning illustration does not include the right-of-way, because typically, as just a general rule from our zoning ordinance, the right-of-way, the zoning right-of-way really typically doesn't matter. So in this case, the 2.92 acres is just these four parcels and not the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ely.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open the public hearing and ask anyone that wants to speak on this matter, please come forward. Anyone at all? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Jimmy Neal. I live at 4543 Veterans Parkway. Will there something be directed as to specifically what will be put in there? I mean, is it going to be locked in, whether it's going to be a strip mall, a service station, or a gas station, or whatever? And when would that be? And would there be another hearing for that?
We'll, our planning director and his staff are taking notes, and we will answer that question if anyone, as soon as we close the public hearing. But we'll answer that question for you shortly. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any additional questions?
Yeah.
Just the fact of what it would be there, because we live, I live next to David here, and we've got seven acres apiece here. I'm just curious as to what would be put there, what the restriction would be as to how it would be built, and what would be on that corner lot. As to seeing, it could be a car lot, or a service station, or, you know, whichever.
Could you point out exactly where your property is in proximity to the one in question?
Yes, sir. Right here is my, this is me, this is you. Would we have these two? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot?
That's pretty easy. What we've got is a planned development. The planned development does not specify exactly which use will be there. But it makes provisions for a certain number of uses that are consistent with the commercial fringe or commercial local zones. The commercial portions are permitted in those zones. It also makes provisions that the buildings, whatever form they take, whether it be a convenience market, a retail shop, or a small strip center, that it be built with a, to the standards in the gateway design over the district, including that it would be predominantly masonry, that it would have the architectural characteristic of the gateway district, which speaks for itself, which is a very high quality, something that I'm very proud of from Murphysboro. There will be another public hearing, and it will be before the City Council. Now, as they get back and they fine-tune their plan as some future date, as their plans begin to materialize, it may be, if they are to deviate from this plan any, that they will be coming back before the Planning Commission to amend this plan. And in which case, we'll send the notices again and have a public hearings before both the Planning Commission and the City Council. So to some degree, there is an uncertainty as to whether there will be a public hearing after the City Councils, but the possibility exists that there will be. With the degree of uncertainty that we've got with this application in terms of how the land will be used, Mr. Cantrell, who I've been working with, outlined that as a possibility, and he discussed that with the Planning Commission during our work session. So I pointed out to Mr. Neal. Something else I want to kind of throw out just for the Planning Commission while I've got the floor. This is one of the things that we're probably going to experience more of with the, with land. The economy right now is kind of going slow. The number of projects that are coming forward for actual development are very few. But people still have property, they still have to make decisions, they still have obligations, they still have circumstances that force them to make decisions. And they have to have other people help them to make those decisions. The applicant is the owner, but there are other people who may have a say upon how he conducts his business because of his obligations and his partnerships, et cetera. And he's not alone in this. That's one of the problems that we'll experience with planned developments. Planned developments are great when people know exactly what they want to do and are ready to do them, and are prepared to undertake those plans as soon as they get their approvals. But in these situations, and in today's times, not many people are moving forward like they were two or three years ago. So we may have to have some patience, we may have to have some understanding about that. This property was predicted to be used for commercial purposes by our Blackman Land Use Study. It was something that, that land use study showed us was the, how this property should be used. So this application is very consistent with that. The applicant, instead of making an application for commercial fringe and just saying, well, I'll just do a good job, he's saying, I'm going to commit to doing a good job by coming in as a planned development, and if I deviate from this thing, I'll be back before you. So he's really trying to demonstrate that he will develop to the same standards as the avenues, the Embassy Suites, the Medical Center, the Physicians Plaza, all those buildings that we see on Medical Center Parkway. So I'm very pleased with that. At some point, we may have to look at a different approach, but at this time, I think that the applicant is trying to put his best efforts forward to demonstrate that he has a huge commitment to doing a good job on the Fetches Parkway.
So Mr. Adelot, typically, we'd say if a PCD come in, we'd know what they're going to do. And now we're in an environment where we don't know what people are exactly going to do, because they don't know themselves. But they, when they do a PCD, I guess, and in their application, they list, all right, we're going to limit ourselves to commercial local, commercial fringe, and that becomes part of the record, and that's what they're limited by.
That's right.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that is right. The uses are permitted, they're listed. These are the uses that will be permitted.
So when we zone something PCD without a plan in place, we're really entitled to the uses that they outline in the program book of their application?
Bingo. That is correct.
Okay.
And to the designs that they're showing us and committing to.
And I just was, I was going to suggest that the gentleman who had the question, if he would like, I'll share my program book with him, because there's a page that does have the building material and the permitted uses, if you'd like to have that.
What I do after this hearing, I'll just give him my copy.
Okay.
Because after this public hearing, I won't need it. Mr. Parks will give us another copy.
Mr. Adelot, let me, is it possible to have a CF or a CL with a design line overlay, gateway design overlay put to it?
Actually, that's an interesting question. Ms. Ely asked me, well, why don't we do it that way the other day? And I've not yet had a chance to consult with our legal department. It's my belief that we probably could.
Would that give the developer in a unsure, a little more unsure times, a little more flexibility in the product he wanted to bring, but would still have the design characteristics of the gateway overlay?
Well, if that approach is work, it would actually give him more flexibility, because he would not be listing the uses, the uses would be listed in the zone ordinance.
So that might be a possible solution, partial solution to a sometimes tricky problem?
Yes, it may be. And in these days, you know, the economy is kind of slow. I think we all are aware of that from our own dealings and what we're seeing in the news. It may be that the news has inflated that the situation more than reality. But in any event, I think we need to be, as a, as a planning staff in particular, we need to be willing to listen and look for ways to facilitate opportunity to still happen. And there's enough, I guess, clouds for people to deal with that they don't need to have one from my office if it's not necessary.
Mr. Adelot, are we, and maybe I'm missing it, but are we not saying that? I mean, the way I read this is that we're permitting OG, CL, CF, and CM, and asking the developer to do the gateway standards. But that's the way the first sentence reads, is we're giving him that right, because the examples are just such as, or of those different OG, CL, CF, and CM. So the way I read it, we're giving him that right on the front end.
I think that's the kind, well, that's essentially right. We're saying, you are a planned development. We're going to zone you as a PCD under Section 13. And that's where the authority to come in as a planned development resides. So his dealings will be under the authority of Section 13 of the Zone Ordinance. Now, he's mimicking, the uses are permitted in the OG, the CF, the CL, and the CM zones. Now, he's mimicking the uses are permitted in the OG, the CF, the CL, and the CM zones, which are essentially the uses that are listed right here. That such as is basically a verbatim listing of those commercial uses that are permitted in those zones.
Well, I guess, I mean, and going back to whoever asked the question, it sounds like we've already accomplished that. It's, it's now a matter of discussion. When we say we're giving him these zones and then saying it's going to be a gateway standard, I, I don't, it is what it is. I mean, that's, we're telling him, he's got that. I took your comment to say that, that we were going to take that under advisement.
Well, one of the things that I'm going to do, not, it's going to be independent of this application. I'm going to have a discussion with our legal department about the possibility of zoning people to CF, but place them in the GDO overlay District 1, or 2, or 3, or 4, which is a different authority. In that case, they would be the CF zone, but they would, they would have to come through in a designer review process, like we do on the Medical Center Parkway and the Thompson Lane, where they go through the initial designer review and the final designer review. This application here, through the, through the plan development approach, is accomplishing the same thing. It's just, it's just a matter of which way our legal department would prefer to do it. Now, there may be some subtle differences in the result that aren't easily identified here. For instance, signage. Signage is permitted differently in the commercial fringe district and within the GDO overlay 1 than it is in a planned commercial development, for instance. So, there may be some subtle differences, and I want to know what those differences are before I, when I go to discuss that with our legal department. If that is the approach we go in the future, it will have no bearing on this application.
I did, would like to point out, if you don't mind, that there are some uses that are permitted in the listed zoning categories that aren't listed in the pattern book, like CL would permit various types of residential uses. They're not allowing those. And there are some uses that require a special use permit, and those aren't included in the list. So, there are some nuances that are different, but for the most part, you're absolutely right, Mr. Halliburton.
Mr. Gilli?
And that's the point I was about to make. I think what Mr. Halliburton's saying is, in this particular circumstance, the end result is the same, but doing it as the, as the HUD, a loosely done HUD, this way does allow us to look at those, the list of potential uses in the blanket zoning and cull some of those out that might not be appropriate for certain areas that we might not be able to do if we had blanket zoning but with an overlay.
That is correct, and that's part of, I guess, in my remarks about, it would give, that, the other approach would give even more flexibility. This is a more limiting approach.
Well, alright, so, we're saying that the such as, such as is, you know, are we limiting it to what's listed here, or are we just saying it's limited, limited to OG, GL, CL, CF, CM? And these are sort of examples of that, because Ms. Ely's already pointed out, there are some that are not included here. So, are we saying that the entitlement is for OG, CL, CF, CM, no matter what it includes, or what's just listed in the program book?
Why don't we fix this, just right now? Because in my discussion with Mr. Cantrell, who worked on this, that's what I told him to do. I said, just don't say such as, and somehow or another, such as popped back up. Why don't we just say including?
Limited to, I think, you know, is this a finite list, or is this a list of examples?
I wanted it to be a finite list, and Mr. Cantrell somehow or another got fixated on such as. He's not here to answer the question himself, Mr. Parks is instead. So, but the objective that, as I understand it, if we just say, these uses and strike such as.
He can't go beyond that list that's there. He can't come to us and, and say that he wants to do a list, a use that's not listed there.
That's what, that's what the point we're trying to get at.
Yeah, and that's, that was my. If I might suggest that the, if this is approved, that it, a condition be that the identified uses be the only uses that are allowed, and if the uses permitted could say the following uses are allowed, and with it being clear here that if they want to come in and do something other than what's listed here, they're going to have to amend their PCD zoning.
I think that's the point that we're trying to make. In essence, in essence, what we're doing, that sentence, Mr. Aylott, rather than just taking out the such as, instead of those currently identified in Chart 1, under those blanket zonings, the following uses, colon, and then that list, making that just a straight finite list. David, is that the, the most clear way to make that happen?
Just, the uses permitted, actually, just strike everything before daycare.
Correct.
If that's your decision, when these are submitted for city council, they, it will be written the way that you've asked for it to be written, if that's what you decide to do.
I think that clears everything out. Like you said, you just strike the first clause of that sentence where after the colon and permit, uses permitted, it starts with the list.
That would accomplish what we want to do.
I agree.
I'll throw a monkey wrench in it. If this is what the applicant, if the applicant wants more than this, I'm not saying that I wouldn't be, I would be opposed to that, if he wants more, but I just, I just wanted to know that.
That's, that's what I tell Mr. Cantrell. Well, I often tell applicants, in the process of plan development, ask for what you want, we're going to discuss it. You may have to settle for something a little bit less, but let's see what, what you want to do, to see how it will fit the property and the neighborhood.
But your impression was that the list that he has was the list of what it was he was looking to include?
And that's why he mentioned that he may need to come back before you if he wants to change the uses, because he, although wrote it poorly, he was under the impression that he was limiting himself.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Cantrell's boss hasn't objected in the back row yet.
We need to hear from Mr. Parks. No. Best I remember, we closed the public hearing. Is, is that correct?
If that's the case, Vice Chairman, I would move we recommend approval subject to all staff comments and suggestions made orally here by the commission tonight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is a zoning request for a PRD amendment, approximately 183.33 acres along Fortress Boulevard, Old South Properties developer. Ms. Ely, you're on the ball tonight.
I hope so. Thank you for the last time this evening. Chairman, Chairman, sorry, Young. That was a Lamb and Young hybrid, and I didn't mean to do that. Mr. Jones, Chairman Jones. Sorry. And I'm Shan, I mean Margaret Anne. You have before you a request to amend a PRD zoning and rezone a PUD zoning for property located south of Manson Pike, along the western side of Fortress Boulevard. The property is known as the Puckett Station Development and currently is under development. The property to the east is the Manson Pike Crossing Development and it's Zoned PUD. To the north is property that's in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, but it's currently under litigation, and the city is, has passed an ordinance to annex that property, but that hasn't currently been decided. To the northwest is property, is a subdivision, a city single-family subdivision called Wilkerson Trace, that's zoned RS-15, RS-12, and RS-10, which are all various forms of single-family residential zoning. To the south is the Blackman School Campus, and that is on Blaze Drive. The applicant's request is to amend the PRD zoning, to remove the Puckett Creek Crossing roadbed, curbs, and gutters from the Manson Pike Crossing PUD, to include it as a part of the Puckett Station PRD. So, in essence, it's increasing the size of the Puckett Station Planned Residential District zoning from 181.75 acres to 183.33 acres, to include that roadbed, curbs, and gutters. The, the rezoning does not include the landscaping along the street or the sidewalks. The, this will enable the developer of Puckett Station Development to have an entrance sign along Fortress Boulevard. The developer's plans are to put that in the median, the landscape median there, and there's an example of the, the sign in your pattern book that you have. This will also serve as the applicant's approval, approval that they would normally come before the planning commission to get a development entrance sign. So, if you do decide to approve this, you'll also be approving it as a development entrance sign. Mr. Matt Taylor's here this evening. He can answer any questions you may have. I know that it can be a little confusing when I said PRD and PUD, but those are just two types of planned development zonings. PRD stands for Planned Residential District, solely consists of various types of residential development. So, Puckett Station has condos and single-family detached dwellings as well. PUD can be strictly residential, can be a mixture residential and commercial, or can be just commercial. So, when I reference PUD and PRD, that's what those stand for. So, basically, this is just an increase, the size of the Puckett Station Development, to include that roadbed, to allow the applicant to have that development entrance sign. Like I said, if you have any questions from Mr. Taylor or staff, we'll be able to answer them before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing to consider this rezoning application.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Ms. Jones?
Are we supposed to have a plan book for this?
You shouldn't have had one that looked like this right here.
Yes. Let me get you one.
Do we need y'all have one? I don't, I don't think we have one.
Didn't they come in the back?
I brought my packet. I don't have that. I just want to see that one page I'll refer to. That's all we have. I've seen this before.
This was included with your materials for our last plan commission meeting where we studied them, or rather, I brought it up, I think I brought it up under other business.
And we were, we were probably supposed to keep them and bring them with us again. Sorry. Thank you.
Any questions?
Sorry, I thought they were in your, in your books.
Ms. Ely, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
They're really not changing the use of the property. It's more dealing with the road, is that?
Absolutely no use is changing with either Manson Pike Crossing or Puckett Creek.
No increase in units or decrease in units? It's all?
Nothing's changing.
Basically, dealing with the road?
That's right, sir. And, you know, sometimes the plan development process is a give and take sort of thing, so the applicant has committed to topping the road, which is called Puckett Creek Crossing, which leads to this property. It's currently needs a topping, and so the applicant said that if they do take over that roadbed, curbs, and gutter, that they'll finish that off and they'll top, and finish that road, which will be an improvement.
Let me, let me help. I think she's about to, she's about to go straight from the path. Actually, the city will be doing the topping of that. What happened is the developer of the apartments and condominiums adjacent to the road had a default. They, there's a financial situation, and we called their bond, and we have the bond to top the road off. And the city has that already in hand, and we would take that obligation. Now, what the developer has agreed to do is, because he has a very large stake in this road as the interest to the subdivision, he has agreed to accept the warranty. He will warrant the construction of the road. He'd actually helped pay for part of the road when it was originally built. So, the applicant will warrant the road construction. But the city will be placing asphalt as part of our obligations as we've, we've taken over, or, you know, called their charity for performance. But after that, Mr. Floyd and his company will warrant for three years the, the road construction.
Sir, I wrote in your staff comments that the applicant would be doing the work with the money that the city called from the bond, but apparently that the city will be doing the work, or a city contractor.
So, it's really sort of a win-win for?
Yes, it is, it is a win-win. It's unfortunate, the, the company that had the original obligation is unable to perform at this point, but we find that the city in a situation where we're protecting the taxpayers, and we're warranting the road. Mr. Floyd has the ability to control the roadbed that is the interest into the subdivision. He has the ability to get a sign to it, where he can get the exposure so his subdivision can be marketed properly. It's a very nice development out there, and it's just hard to find, and it's to help them to achieve that. The, the key points are on Page 1 of the program book, since you can see it. This is something that we've looked over very carefully. It's something that has been in the making for several months, and our legal department has been part of this discussion, so they're, they're on board with this. This isn't something that just myself and my staff brings to you. This is something that the full city's administration has been involved with. And I will rest easier as the city's planning director, knowing that we have a very responsible party able to warrant that street construction.
Especially after what happened to the last.
That's right.
You should conduct a public hearing to consider this zoning request, just as a reminder.
Any questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing and ask anyone to speak for or against this matter. Please step forward. Anyone speaking for or against this matter, please step forward. Last call, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing. I missed somebody, I'm overconscious. Any questions, staff from the planning commission? What are the wishes?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. The next item is the Platts and Plans. Ms. Logan?
Good evening, thank you. The first item before you tonight is a site plan for 4,000 square feet on 2.65 acres, known as the Lidle Creek Crossing Development, which is located along Middleton Street Boulevard, just east of South Church Street. This is the Phase 3 of an ongoing development, which has began, I think, about four or five years ago, and is a continuation of that building site. This will be the completion of Phase 3 building, which will be a 4,000-square-foot medical office facility, and it will be in conjunction with already a veterinary office on, a separate office, retail building that's already on site. This is partly of a finalization of a plan that always showed this inclusion of a third building. It's just now oriented different than when you saw the original master plan back in '04. Since the original master plan was reviewed and approved by the planning commission, we have adopted water quality protection standards, and that now has created a situation for their drive aisle, which is shown on the site plan. They will have to go before the Water and Sewer Board to receive a variance, and we think that, that hardship does exist, because the original development of the site was, started way before the actual ordinance was ever put in place. We do believe too, that if we had, if staff had the ability to go out and walk the site with the engineer, that we may actually be able to reduce some of that water quality protection area. We, when looking at the, where the top of the bank and the toe of the banks are shown on the site plan, there might be an area there that's maybe shown a little too wide, and we might actually be able to reduce where the water quality protection area is, which would actually require less of a variance. It would still require a variance, but not as much of a variance. So, we would like the opportunity to do that before it goes to the Water and Sewer Board for a variance. The other issue that surrounds the site plan is the fire department turnaround that was requested, and the applicant has been working with Mr. Ken Honeycutt in our fire department about that, and we've come up with two possible alternatives. One is to either sprinkle the building, or two is to do some redesign work on the pavement that is south of the existing building, Phase 1. We are still working with the developer on that, and we just ask for your approval tonight, subject to us resolving that issue. And of course, if there's any problems with that, we would bring it back before you prior to any permits.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Logan? This does not require a public hearing, so.
No, sir.
Maybe somebody will speak. But the two major issues that have been outlined, that you've just pointed, can basically be worked out without you, a tentative approval, subject to those two issues?
Subject to staff comments would take care of it, yes, sir.
Mr. Gilli?
With that being said, Vice Chairman, I would move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Our next item is the Platts and Plans. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a site plan for 1,440 square foot addition, located at Riverdale Baptist Church, which is located along the southern side of Warrior Drive, just west of the intersection with South Church Street. This church has experienced growth and is needing additional area to locate some of their Sunday school classrooms. They have brought before you tonight a site plan for a portable building. In fact, it was the current portable building that's being used for classrooms at Case and Lane Church of Christ, which is, right now, undergoing a large building addition that you all approved back in January. And this building would be purchased from Case and Lane Church of Christ and utilized for similar purposes. It is being located at the rear of the building. They have worked with staff on access and proper safety measures, because it will be located at one side of the parking lot. We feel, this has been approved in other instances, and we feel that... We feel, this has been approved in other instances, and we feel that we could set a 36-month timeframe on this approval. The church does have plans for an addition, and they want to begin working through that process, but we would, would still want to establish a 36-month timeframe to allow them to be able to utilize the portable building, but also to keep us on target with limiting the amount of time that it stays on the site. Otherwise, site plans in good order.
Okay. If the, if their construction is not started in 36 months, can they get an extension if construction is pending?
Yes, sir, if they want to come back before you all, but you all would have to approve that.
But they do have that opportunity to do that?
Yes, sir.
Because I know a lot of plans have been slowed up in the last.
Yes, sir. They have assured staff, though, in our conversations, that they have plans to hopefully begin an addition before that 36-month timeframe, and I think that they're, they're, they wouldn't plan, at least at this point, on asking for anything more than the 36 months.
We don't want to back them in a corner, I don't think.
Mr. Young, something I want to add on that point is that typically, when a church is located in a, particularly a single-family residential district, the board of zoning appeals would place a similar condition of approval. However, since this is RM16 and a church is permitted by right, the BZA is not involved. We, we, you feel that the three months, three years would give them a period of time in which to get going? If they're making any kind of tangible efforts, particularly if they're turning plans, if they are, you know, having ongoing conversations with us, we'll do what we can to seek an extension if it's needed.
Well, that was my point, I didn't want to.
Oh, yeah, we'll definitely work with them.
Where, if, unless they had turned spade of dirt, that, that this was going to run out.
Right. No, we'll work with them, and we've, we've had good discussions with the church leadership so far, so I think we would continue to work with them and try to get them what they need.
I think it's a, a very good asset to the community that our churches are expanding.
We're seeing a lot of growth, and I think you, and you're going to see a couple more come before you soon, that we've been working with, so I agree with you.
Thank you. Any other?
Nobody else to comment, I'll move for a first, so just call staff comments.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next favorite report is the staff comments and other business.
I've made notes for any additional staff comments tonight.
And my, and my next favorite part is adjournment. We are adjourned.